Okay, thank you. Please be seated. All right, welcome to the full meeting of City Council. I'm going to start with land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Anishnaabik, Hodinashoni, Leni Peewak and Atewandran. We honour and respect the history, languages and culture of the diverse Indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all of the treaties that are specific to this area: the two-row Wampum Belt Treaty of the Hodinashoni Confederacy Civil Covenant Chain, the beaver hunting grounds of the Hodinashoni-Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the McKee Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishnaabik and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampum of the Anishnaabik and Hodinashoni. Three Indigenous nations that are neighbours to London are the Chipwas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames and the Muncie Delaware Nation, who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures and customs. The City of London is also committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. If you need to make a request specific to this meeting, please contact councilagenda@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. It's now my pleasure to introduce our National Anthem performer. The sweeping folk anthems of Willem James Cohen has been capturing ears across Eastern Canada since 2018. Across three releases of various singles, he has explored the uncharted corners of his soul and his sound, sometimes alone with a guitar and sometimes backed by a collective musicians known as the Friends of the Cove. The lush instrumentation of Cohen's production is always in service of soft-spoken truths and an eye to the future. Please rise and join me in welcoming Willem, who will now perform the National Anthem for us.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
All right, I'm looking now for disclosures of pecuniary interest from council colleagues for today's agenda. Council Ramon?
Thank you. I'll be declaring a conflict on item 8.1, the second report of ICSC, item 11, East London Link, as financial college is my employer.
Okay, thank you. Others? All right, okay, seeing none. That brings us to recognitions. I'm going to move to the podium for the 2025 Mayor's New Year's Honours List recognitions. All right, I'm going to call an audible. Council Trosaw thinks there's a recognition that should come first, so go ahead, Council Trosaw.
Yes, thank you very much for taking me out of order. I want to acknowledge in the gallery today, a group of students from University of Western Ontario, Faculty of Information and Media Studies. We have journalism and communications studies people here, under the leadership of Professor Oshinaw. And if you could just raise your hands and identify yourself through the chair. Yeah, there are quite a few, and they're going to want to be, they're going to want to come out of here today with some, I think, some interviews of our honorees and maybe some of the councillors. So I wanted, I wanted you all to know that they're, they're here. So anyway, thank you very much.
All right, so great chance to be recognised and get interviewed by, I think, 27 different people at once. So that'll be, that'll be an exciting day. Okay, now I'm going to move to the podium and do the Mayor's New Year's Honours List recognitions. And thank you, Council Trosaw, for recognizing some of our guests today. We appreciate you being here and, and of course, doing some interviews and helping us out by spreading the, the good work that's being done by Londoners in our community. All right, thank you. So this is, this is an exciting part of the year because each year at the start of the year, at the first council meeting, we get to recognise some amazing Londoners doing amazing things. The Mayor's New Year's Honours List is an annual recognition of Londoners who have made outstanding contributions to this community. The categories that we recognise Londoners under include accessibility, age-friendly, arts, distinguished Londoner, diversity in race relations, environment, heritage. And, and under distinguished Londoner, we actually recognise a number of individuals for various contributions in that category. So, and it's now my pleasure to go through and introduce the 2025 Mayor's New Year's Honours List recipients and share a little bit about each of them for you today. And, and as I do this and as I recognise the individuals, what I'm going to ask you to do is, you can kind of come up when I introduce, when I say your name, you can kind of stand beside me. I'm going to say nice things about you. And then I want you to stay up at the front because at the end, we'll kind of have everyone gathered. We'll do a group photo at the end of all the honorees all at once. So, little bit of logistics, and I'll try to get it right, too. So, the first honoree is under the excess, under the category of accessibility, and that's Jaclyn Madden. Come on out, Jaclyn. Jackie Madden has been a tireless champion and advocate for accessibility in our community for decades, both through her support and advocacy for her son, but also by extending that, by playing a key role in community advocacy and mobilising efforts to improve the city's supports. Over recent years, Jackie has been a guiding force in the efforts to improve paratransit, to hold both council and LTC accountable for the funding and administration of paratransit, and in mobilising advocates to be present at committee meetings and council meetings. She's a strong voice in our community and has spent countless hours of her own attending meetings, advocating on transit riders' behalf, liaising with the media to amplify the message. For these and many more reasons, Jackie is named to the 2025 Mayor's New Year's Honours List in the category of accessibility. Congratulations. Next, in the category for age-friendly, Diane McMillan. Diane has contributed exceptionally as a lead volunteer at the free income tax clinics. Diane has been empowering older adults and low-income Londoners by helping them access vital financial resources over a 20-year period. Her dedication and expertise have made a significant impact on the financial stability and quality of life for countless community members, particularly older adults, through her leadership and volunteer work. Her tireless volunteerism and profound impact on the community embody the spirit of an age-friendly London. Her work empowers older adults to lead to, to Her work empowers older adults to lead to financial stability and independent lives, and her efforts have helped make London a more inclusive and supportive community for all ages. Her unwavering commitment to the community, especially to older adults, makes her a true advocate for the financial empowerment and age-friendliness. For these reasons and more, Diane is named to the 2025 Mayor's New Year's Honours List in the category of age-friendly. In the category of arts, I have Clark Bryan. Clark Bryan is a remarkable Londoner whose contributions include being a gifted, classical-trained pianist, educator, community activist, and founder of the Aeonian Hall in London. There, he developed and implemented a free after-school music programme which annually offers over 100 underserved youth an opportunity to experience the joy of a rich musical education, an opportunity they may not otherwise have. Clark has recorded 14 albums of piano music, including two Canadian Music Centre Award-nominated CDs. Clark has not only demonstrated exceptional talent and dedication to his profession, but has also used his musical abilities to amplify and uplift others. His performances are a unique blend of technical skill and emotional depth, earning him the admiration and respect from peers and audiences alike. Clark's passion and dedication to education is truly inspirational. He taught all levels for 39 years, participated in writing curriculum for two national conservatories, and edited the new Millennium Piano Series for Conservatory Canada. Some of his students have had exceptional accomplishments, including acceptance to music programmes in universities such as Yale and Juilliard. Clark Bryan embodies the qualities of a true leader and a change-maker through his unwavering commitment to music, education, and community. For these reasons and more, Clark is named to the 2025 Mayor's New Year's Honours List in the category of arts. The next one is a posthumous award for Claire Crooks. So I'll have loved ones come out for this presentation. Claire was a researcher, an academic leader, a champion for youth mental health, a devoted mother and wife. Claire was a groundbreaking clinical psychologist and researcher. She established the Centre for School Mental Health at Western University in 2015 and co-founded the Fourth R, which targets violence such as bullying, as well as dating, peer, and group violence. Claire contributed to over 100 publications during her time as a Western Faculty of Education, in the Western Faculty of Education. As well, she trained thousands of educators, nurses, mental health professionals, and judges across Ontario on data-driven approaches to violence prevention and mental health. Her work earned her the World Discovery's Vanguard Innovator of the Year Award in 2022. She was named to the Order of Canada earlier this year. Her nomination acknowledged that Claire, quote, "inspired a national movement to address youth mental health." For these reasons, Claire Crooks has been posthumously awarded and named to the 2025 Mayor's New Year's Honours List in the category of distinguished Londoner. Continuing in the distinguished Londoner category, George Kahulis. A lifelong Londoner, George Kahulis has always been a fierce advocate for the revitalisation of our downtown. He has spent 40 years serving the London business community and is recognised by local developers, appraisers, and municipal officials as a leading authority on commercial real estate. George is also a committed and enthusiastic volunteer, having served on a number of local boards and commissions, such as Creative Cities, Architectural Conservatory, is the past Chair of Downtown London Business Association, a member of the Mayor's Task Force on Downtown, a Director of the Covent Garden Market, a past Chair of the London Public Library, past Chair of the Performing Arts Centre Board, past Chair of the London Health Sciences Foundation, and a member of Fanshawe College's Board of Governors. He presently serves as President of the Grand Theatre. For his many contributions to the London community, George Kahulis is named to the 2025 Mayor's New Year's Honours List in the category of distinguished Londoner. George is going to be running for mayor next term again because it's the only thing he hasn't done in the city yet. Continuing on in the distinguished Londoner category, Jim Chapman. London-born Jim Chapman has enjoyed an inspiring 60-year music industry career working as a musician, agent, manager, promoter, and founder of the area's first professional recording studio. He helped guide and build the careers of many local performers and has presented a wide variety of musical concerts and events. Signed to Columbia Records in 1968, he later played, I was born in 1978, Jim. He later played with the legendary Ronnie Hawkins, toured extensively, and in the 1970s created London's first successful radio-oriented ad agency and jingle company. He continues to perform and promote in concerts today and was inducted into the London Music Hall of Fame in 2023. Jim served on several City Hall advisory committees, and in his decade-long media career was the first Londoner to simultaneously host a daily radio and TV programmes while writing regular columns for the London Free Press and Business London magazine. He also created his own publishing company, releasing works by several local authors, as well as nine books of his own, including the popular definitive history of London's 1960s music scene, Battle of the Bands, and two recounts of his 1999 near-death experience, 2001's bestselling Heart and Soul, and 2006's Come Back to Life, which continued to sell steadily 20 years after publication. Jim was blessed to be able to use his high school media profile to aid in raising a large charitable, his high media profile, not high school, high media profile, maybe he did stuff in high school, too. High media profile to raise money for charitable donations, or charitable organisations such as Easter Seals, London Health Sciences Centre, Child Reach, Jesse's Journey, the Bethany Hope Foundation, Unity of London, and many other worthy causes over the years. He strongly believes that he has managed to have such a productive life because of advice his father gave him when he was young. Quote, "Always remember, what you receive is never as important as what you give." For all these reasons and more, Jim Chapman has been named to the 2025 Mayor's New Year's Honours List as a distinguished Londoner. Also, you guys can kind of come into the circle a little bit. You don't have to be practically out the door. So slide back in. Stand in front of my colleagues. They'll be here all meeting. It's okay. They want to see you, not them, most of the time. I promise they won't photobomb you in the background. I thought my guests were out of order, but my pages were out of order. That's my fault. Next, in the distinguished Londoner category, Mike, come on out. Yeah, everybody knows Mike here at City Hall. In July of 2024, Mike displayed extraordinary courage during a routine visit to a grocery store in the City of London. While shopping, he witnessed a violent altercation between a 72-year-old store employee and a younger male attempting to steal items. Fearing for the safety of the elderly employee, Mike quickly intervened. Without hesitation, he placed himself between the aggressor and the vulnerable staff member, preventing further harm to the employee. Mike managed to restrain the attacker, holding him in place while waiting for the police to arrive. However, the situation took a dangerous turn when the assailant, unbeknownst to Mike, pulled out a concealed knife and launched a vicious attack. Mike was stabbed multiple times in an effort to protect others, suffering serious injuries, including a collapsed lung. Despite his injuries, Mike's actions successfully safeguarded the employee from further harm, and the attacker fled the scene. Mike's selfless actions undoubtedly prevented a tragedy, protecting both the store employee and the public from further violence. His bravery in the face of danger is a testament to the power of ordinary citizens stepping up in extraordinary circumstances. For his selfless act of heroism, Mike is named to the 2025 Mayor's New Year's Honours List in the category of distinguished Londoner. Start one over here. We'll start on this side now. Also distinguished Londoner Sheldon Carter. Sheldon Carter is the president of Digital Extremes, a London-based digital gaming company with 500 employees. It is the largest company of its kind in southwestern Ontario, garnering dozens of awards for both its innovative games and its progressive studio culture. As a co-creator of Epic Games' multimillion-dollar unit selling Unreal franchise, including Unreal and Unreal Tournament, and the award-winning Warframe, amongst others, Digital Extremes is annually recognised as one of Canada's top 100 best companies to work for. Under Sheldon's leadership, community has remained a key pillar of Digital Extremes' success, supporting and championing countless charitable and social equity causes. In addition, Digital Extremes hosts Terricon, a yearly in-person digital convention. Most recently, Terricon 2024 at RBC Place welcomed over 2,000 gamers for two days in a series of panels where developers discussed their craft. For his many contributions to the London business community, Sheldon Carter has been named to the 2025 Mayor's New Year's Honours List in the category of distinguished Londoner. Final one for the category of distinguished Londoner, Tyler Stewart. Come on out. Tyler Stewart, also known as London's Green Ranger, has made significant contributions to mental health awareness and community supports. In 2021, he was honoured with the Forest City London Music Award Contributor Award for his contributions to mental health awareness initiatives. His recognition continued when he was named the 2021 Champion of Mental Health by the Canadian Mental Health Association for his ongoing efforts to promote mental health awareness within the community. His tireless work has positively impacted many lives, making him a deserving candidate for this recognition. As a rapper and musician, Tyler uses his platform and personal experiences to inspire others to seek support, especially within the youth community. He's an active fundraiser for Mind Your Mind and has a deep passion for ending the stigma around mental health. As the London Green Ranger, Tyler regularly appears at charities, fundraisers, and events throughout the region, spreading positivity, joy, and pride in the City of London. His efforts extend to visits at the Children's Hospital, Ronald McDonald House, and the CMHA, where he shares messages of hope and support. A devoted father of three, Tyler's personal journey includes watching his daughter battle brain cancer from the age of one. Now five and thriving, her fight has shaped Tyler's mission to encourage others to reach out, talk about their struggles, and know that they are not alone. Tyler's dedication to spreading joy, raising awareness, and supporting others makes him a true bright light in our community. For these reasons and more, Tyler is named to the 2025 Mayor's New Year's Honours List in the category of distinguished Londoner. In the category of diversity and race relations, Heatham Karaki. Come on out. Heatham migrated to Canada in 2019. Ever since, he has been extremely active in promoting diversity, inclusion, and anti-oppression values throughout his work and volunteerism. Heatham seeks to understand what challenges newcomers are faced with and is determined to use resources effectively to provide solutions. Heatham established and is currently Executive Director of the Rights and Responsibilities Awareness Initiative, RRAI, which is a community initiative based in London, Ontario, aimed at enhancing legal, financial, and cultural awareness amongst new Canadians through public education. RRAI was incorporated as a not-for-profit organisation in 2020, and it received its charitable status from the Canada Revenue Agency in 2021. It is governed by a diverse board of directors and an advisory committee, a diverse committee of community facilitators representing different ethnic and cultural backgrounds. Members of the advisory committee play a vital role in connecting RRAI with local communities, promoting RRAI's activities, and establishing connections within their community organisation. Current members of the advisory committee are from the Francophone, Latino, Black, Indian, Asian, Middle Eastern, and LGBTQIA+ communities. RRAI is currently working in partnership with the London Police and Western University on a project funded by the Government of Ontario that aims to reduce online hate crimes amongst London and Middlesex communities by educating the community to protect them against such crimes and ensuring individuals are safe when reporting them. Heatham has also volunteered with several boards and committees in London, and for all these reasons and more, he's named to the 2025 Mayor's New Year's Honours List in the category of diversity and race relations. In the category of environment, Shaquille Seeley. Shaquille is an outstanding leader in the City of London's environmental sector whose work embodies our city's commitment to protect and enhance the environment. In particular, Shaquille and the people who work with him make significant contributions to tree planting and public education about trees, and are thus furthering nature-based solutions for climate change, migration, and adaptation in the Forest City. Since 2021, Shaquille has been working out of the Westminster Pond Centre with ReForestLondon on a variety of programmes aimed at providing environmental education and opportunities for Londoners. He currently acts as the Co-Executive Director of Operations and Projects at ReForestLondon, where he oversees a program delivery team that advances the organisation's strategic priorities while developing partnerships across sectors in London. Shaquille's work is directly linked to the ongoing success in promoting tree planting and tree care throughout the city. He's responsible for managing ReForestLondon's community tree nursery as well as the operational development and community consultation of the Westminster Pond Centre Social Enterprise. For all of these reasons and more, Shaquille is named to the 2025 Mayor's New Year's Honours List in the category of environment. Congratulations. And finally, in the category of heritage, Maureen Spencer-Gulajenko. Maureen has been a longtime champion for London's history, contributing to the awareness of the City of London's heritage assets through her work to preserve and protect Eldon House Heritage Site and Gardens. Maureen first became involved with the Eldon House during the 175th anniversary in 2008, when she was part of the Collective Committee to organise a year-long celebration of that milestone anniversary. Since then, Maureen has been Since then, Maureen has been a staunch and active volunteer at the museum and an eloquent advocate for heritage. She has contributed in countless ways in stabilizing Eldon House. Maureen was part of the inaugural board of directors in 2013 and assisted in numerous areas of governance, organizational policy, and hugely in assisting with special groups, projects, and initiatives. During that time, she acted as the museum's inaugural chair of the board of directors and served for two terms in that role. Maureen represents the spirit of Eldon House as someone who is passionate about the history of London and focused on bringing the community together in our historic spaces. Her dedication to heritage preservation and education is important for the Eldon House site and the growth of heritage awareness and tourism within our community. For all of these reasons and more, Maureen is named to the 2025 Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of heritage. Okay, before we do just a group photo, let me just say, it is quite humbling to stand with some amazing Londoners who are doing, making amazing contributions to our community. When we think about being an amazing, fast-growing city, a place where people want to come to, a place where people want to live, part of that is because of the amazing work that individual Londoners do each and every day to improve our quality of life, to make our community amazing, and to share and promote the types of things that happen in this community, whether it's the promotion of heritage, or diversity, or acts of bravery, or contributions to business. These are a set of what are many amazing Londoners doing amazing things in our city, and we're honored to represent them today. Now, I notice that many of you have loved ones in the gallery, and I think it's always important to recognize that when some people are doing amazing things, it's because there is a team of people who are supporting them behind the scenes to make it happen. And so, to everybody who came to support the amazing people before you today, and everybody who's played a role in their lives to free up time or support them for them to make contributions to our community, we also thank you for everything you've done to make this type of work possible. Thank you so much for being here to celebrate your loved ones. Yes, let's clap for them, yes. Yes, thank you so much for celebrating your loved ones here today, but also recognize that you are part of their success and part of what makes our community great as well. Thank you. Okay, so we'll kind of line up in front of the podium.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right, that concludes closed session. We have the confirmation and signing of the minutes for previous meetings. I have the first meeting held December 17, 2024. I look for a mover and a second for that, Councillor Cuddy, seconded by Councillor Van Meereberg. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to zero with Councillor Trossell marked absent.
Okay, next communications and petitions. So we're going to deal with these two separate. 6.1 is memo from the city clerk. That'll be dealt with now. It doesn't need to be referred to another part of the agenda because there's nothing to attach it to. 6.2, when we get to that, we'll refer it later. So with 6.1, you have a report or a memo from the city clerk and a recommendation listed in there. I guess I'm looking to see if someone's willing to put the recommendation on the floor and then we can have discussion. Deputy Mayor Lewis is willing to put it on the floor, seconded by Councillor Pelosi. Okay, so the clerk's recommendation is on the floor as per the memo. I look for any discussion that people want to have. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship and through you. I'm hoping that the clerk can just provide two pieces of information to us. For those who may not have been part of the GWG discussions in forming this, to begin with, is first where the selection, how the selection process was done. Obviously, this was delegated out. So if the clerk could speak to just the process that they went through on making these selections. And then the second piece is that I want to assure, and I believe it's reflected, but for clarification, because I've had somebody ask me about this directly, and it was certainly the intent, I think, of GWG and the direction from council to include, that this resourcing task force would also be looking at things that would include supports for the councillors. For example, the staffing levels in the councillors' offices, access to technology resources and things like that. So I just want to hopefully have the clerk confirm that, in fact, the process and the scope of the work.
Okay, and the city clerk is online, so I'll go to him now.
Thank you, Your Worship. Speaking to the first point, in August of last year, the draft terms of reference were specifically amended by GWG to direct the city clerk to select the membership of the council resourcing review task force and then bring those candidates forward to a future meeting of council for ratification. That has been done. After an extensive recruitment effort, the memo that's attached to the council agenda at page 72 outlines a bit of the scope of recruitment, along with the description being available on the city's website. It was a significant outreach with our Friends and People Services, along with our A R A O division, reaching a wide variety of individuals. We received 25 applications for the task force. Those were all reviewed, and the five before you today were selected by myself up here consideration. The task force terms of reference are contained as Appendix A to the memo. That is the amended and council-approved terms of reference. The scope of the task force is included under the guiding, sorry, the duties. And the section is 1.6, talks about council policy, base compensation, supplementary compensation and funding source for additional work, such as stipends and board and committee service, council workload, including the minimum workload, balancing the workload, council severance pay, council role description, the expense account policy, along with a role preview document. The piece that I believe the deputy mayor is talking about was discussed at GWG, and I believe there was a discussion there about the supports in the councillor's office. Now, the scope that is included in the terms of reference, those would fall under the councillor workload, those considerations. It's specifically not indicated under 1.6, but that is part of the scope. But I think that it would be part of the consideration for the task force to consider that as part of their work and the workload and balancing the workloads across council. Perhaps if Ms. Corman or Ms. Hunt can recall the discussion at GWG, that may be of assistance.
Go ahead.
Through the chair, there was some discussion of looking at the ability of a councillor to perform their duties as a whole. So the intent of the terms of reference as set by and modified by the Governance Working Group in the summertime was to broaden the scope as compared to past task forces, which just focused on compensation.
Okay, back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate those answers because that was my interpretation as well, that 1.6D, the councillor workload, would allow the task force to also consider the staffing support ratio in the councillor's office and the mechanism by which those staffing positions are currently allocated and filled. So hearing the clerk say that that would be their interpretation, that 6.1D on councillor workload would allow the task force to consider how that workload is impacted by the staffing ratios, that's satisfactory to me. So happy to support this.
Councillor Ramon.
Thank you. And through you, just on that point, I think it would actually be helpful to better outlay those duties in 1.6 because I do believe that that item could be perhaps overlooked or missed in terms of the scope of what we're looking to get back. I would like to not only understand the ratios, but what is that work that's required? So if that isn't in 1.6, I just want to make sure there's clarity so we know we have to take care of that Governance Working Committee and what needs to be done on this, and so that there's enough definition so that we won't be overlapping and that this gets addressed as needed.
I'm not sure how to amend it at this point. So I'm, I think what I'm hearing in terms of what was just shared is more around staffing ratios, whereas I think scope of work in defining that role, I think, is now, in my understanding, is back to GWG. So maybe that can be clarified?
Maybe, maybe I can go back to the clerk in some way on that clarification, whether that's included in the scope here or whether that's a separate discussion at GWG.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is specifically related to the council resourcing review as set out in the terms of reference. And the primary goal of this appointed task force is compensation-related. And I would consider that the workload aspect and the resourcing is secondary. So I would suggest that perhaps a discussion at GWG, the terms of reference have been approved by council already, and that was back in September 24. But that does not stop future direction or further direction being provided to the task force. And perhaps a discussion at GWG would better delineate between those resourcing aspects, so ratio aspect, and what would probably fall within the task force mandate. I would suggest that may be the cleaner path forward. I hope that's helpful.
Okay, councillor.
Thank you, Barry.
Great. Any other comments? Councillor Hopkins.
Yeah, just following up on the clerk's comments, when is the next GWG meeting? Just want to have an idea when we are going to be meeting again.
I don't think one's been called yet, so you can take that up with the chair after the meeting.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this? It's moved and seconded. Okay, seeing none. So this is the full recommendation as contained in the report that's on the floor. We'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 13 to zero.
Okay, next, we have an item of correspondence that's related to an item in our agenda. I just need a motion to refer that to the appropriate part of the agenda. Councillor Pelosi, moved, seconded by Councillor Hillier. Any discussion on that? All right, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to one.
All right, motions to which notice is given, there are none. Reports, we're on to 8.1, which is the second report of the Infrastructure and Corporate Services Committee. Turn it over to Chair Ramon to present the report.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor. I will be looking to put items one through 10, and then 12 and 13 on the floor, as I haven't been asked to pull anything else. And then Councillor Hopkins has offered to present item 11.
Okay, does anyone want anything else dealt with separately? Right now, 11 separate, everything else is together? Okay. All right. So then the chair's putting everything except 11 on the floor. Any discussion on those items? Okay, seeing none, we're going to open those for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to zero.
All right, Councillor Hopkins, you're going to rise and present.
Yeah, I'd be pleased to put 11, which is a contract award for the East London Lincoln Municipal Infrastructure Improvements, on the floor.
Okay, that's on the floor and moved. Any discussion on that? Okay, that's on the floor and moved. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 12 to 0 with one recused.
All right, thank you. That concludes that report. We're on to 8.2, which is the second report of Community and Protective Services Committee. I'll turn that over to Chair Ferrera to present the report.
Thank you, mayor. Please put the second report of the Community and Protective Services Committee on the floor. I have no requests for any polls, so I would move 1 through 8.
Okay, does anybody want anything dealt with separately in that report? No? Okay, the chair's put the whole thing on the floor. Any discussion on anything from that report? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, I just want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Maythers and his team, and Mr. Felberg and his group in particular, on the Duluth Crescent Agreement with Wastel Homes to bring some affordable housing into that plan of subdivision that the city has led up to this point, with the city-led rezoning, acquiring the property through the, as a surplus school site, when it was made available to us through the London Catholic District School Board. This has been a bit of a process. Happy to see the agreement coming into place for the first builds to start, and I'm sure that there will be a lot of conversation between Mr. Maythers' team and Ms. Share's team as we get Duluth Crescent opened up to Admiral Drive and get that new road allowance opened as well. But getting this agreement in place so that we can create those affordable housing units is welcome. In particular, very, very happy that Wastel has chosen to focus on a building where there will be affordable units for seniors, a much-needed opportunity in Ward 2, as we've got a fairly significant seniors population that's looking to downsize from their single-family homes. The last time we had a building become available, there were over 400 people, seniors, from the Seniors Association in the neighborhood, that put their name on a waiting list for seniors units. That building itself is not even opened yet, and now we will have a second opportunity to fulfill some of those requests. So very happy, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Maythers and his team for their work on this.
Okay, any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
All right, we're on to the second report of SPPC. I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Lewis to present.
Thank you, your worship. I've not been made aware of any items that colleagues wish to be pulled, but I'm guessing that Counsel Trosaw has his hand raised. He'd like an item to be pulled to be dealt with and voted on separately. So I'll look to see if there's any other items that colleagues want dealt with separately.
Anything people would like dealt with separately? Yeah? Do you want something separate, or you just want to make comments?
No, I would like item 5, with respect to 4.1, Report of the Integrated Transportation Committee Advisory Committee, discussed. And I'm very sorry.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that separate. Okay. Anything else? All right, I'll let you make a motion.
All right, then I'm prepared to put items 1 through 4 and 6 through 8 on the floor from the SPPC agenda.
Okay, those are on the floor. Any discussion on those? Okay, seeing none, we'll open those ones for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
And I will now put item 5, the first report of the Integrated Transportation Community Advisory Committee, on the floor. Just drawing to colleagues' attention, the vote on that was 11 to 3.
Okay, that's on the floor. Looking for any comments on that. Counsel Trosaw, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to be very brief, because we did discuss this at the, at the committee, so I'm not going to repeat everything that was said. But I think this is important enough that I want to call it out at a council meeting. I continue to feel as if the inclusion of the language, quote, "and take no further action," is not necessary. There is a, there is a desire of this council to proceed with this, that's not an issue. There's a, there's a desire on the part of this council to proceed with this expeditiously, that is not an issue. And I don't believe removing the language and "take no further action," and just to be clear, the clause "take no further action" is not on the Mobility Master Plan as a whole. It's, it's on the particular advisory committee report that we received that had two recommendations in it. And the recommendation that I'm particularly interested in, and which I supported at the committee, was the notion of having a carry-forward working, working group of some sort that would outlive the expiry, the expiration date of the advisory committee itself. Council will recall that the advisory committee was abolished. It will not continue past April. I understand that its last meeting is going to be in April, I'm sorry, is going to be in March, as things are scheduled now, which means they really don't have much of an opportunity to continue their wrap-up work on, on this matter of public policy that they've given a lot of attention to. And I think that's disrespectful, and I would like to at least give the individuals who participated in that committee the opportunity to continue in a working group. I don't think it will delay anything, and I just should just ask, just, just as a marker, I should ask the staff again, when do you, when do you think, now that your January 31st is your closing date for this round of public participation, when do you think you'll have your next version of the report to us?
Go ahead.
Well, I defundo that button does, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about that. Thank you very much. We expect to have the detailed maps with the revised changes from the public input process for this committee towards the end of Q1, maybe early Q2, and then the final report would come later in the summer. But the network maps, which seem to be the piece of discussion, should be expected towards the end of this quarter.
Counsel Trosaw.
Thank you. So given that, just to wrap up, given that, I'd be, I'd be very pleased that this council would extend the term for, for this advisory committee. But since the council has already decided contrary to that, we could, we could just allow the interested members of that group to continue as a working group. They are not going to be able to have the opportunity to receive this next report as a constituted working group. And I think that by removing, and we don't have to deal with this today in terms of exactly what we're going to do. I want to keep that open, but if we take out the language, which I think is very prejudicial, if we take out the language and "take no further action," we keep our options open. So I am once again going to appeal to my colleagues to vote no on this motion, insofar as it contains that language. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Trosaw. Any other speakers? All right, we're going to open the voting on this item.
Voting yes, thank you.
Closing the vote, motion, closing the vote, motion carries 11 to 2.
And that concludes the second report of the Street Priorities and Policy Committee. Great, thank you. We're on to the second report of the Planning and Environment Committee. I'll turn it over to Chair Lehman to present.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to present the second report of the Planning and Environment Committee. I've had no requests for any items to be pulled.
Would anybody like anything dealt with separately from this committee? All right, seeing none, that entire report is on the floor. Any discussion by members of council? All right, seeing none, we'll open the report for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
Thank you. That concludes a rather short second report of Planning and Environment Committee.
I don't think the planning chair should be saying things like that this early in the year, but we appreciate, appreciate you making this one pass. On to number nine, added reports. 9.1 is the second report of council in closed session. Counsel Ramen will present that report for the items that are coming out of closed session for consideration.
Thank you, and through you. So the second report of council in closed session, your council in closed session report. Item 1 is the settlement agreement, property acquisition, 1105 Wellington Road, South Wellington Gateway Project, that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, finance supports with the concurrence of the director, construction infrastructure services, on the advice of the director, realty services, with respect to the property located 1105 Wellington Road, further described as part of Lot 25 concessions to, just designated as parts 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. Experpuration Plan ER 1545895 in the City of London County, Millisack, being part of PIN 08495-0273, as shown on the location map as Appendix B, for the purpose of future road improvements to accommodate the Wellington Gateway Project. The following actions be taken: A, the settlement agreement as to compensation and possession from White Oaks Shopping Center, Inc., to settle the outstanding experpuration compensation to the property owner for the total sum of $325,000, be accepted, subject to the terms and conditions as set out in the agreement as Appendix C; and B, that financing for this acquisition be approved as set out in the source of financing report heretofore as Appendix A, that, and that was B, and that progress was made with respect to items 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4, as noted on the public agenda.
Okay, thank you for that. That's moved by Counsel Ramen. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll open this for voting. It might help if I say this is an item related to BRT.
I just wanted to clear, I just wanted to clarify, mayor, are we?
Counsel, we're in the middle of a vote. We're dealing with the item related to BRT. I would suggest, I would suggest you don't ask about other items in camera, because only one of them is coming out.
Just the entire, just, this is just 6.1 we're voting on.
Just the item related to the BRT.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 1.
Great, thank you, Counsel Ramen. And my apologies for cautioning you there, Counsel Bambergen, but there were a number of items we dealt with in camera. There was only one coming out. When you held it up and we're going to ask a question, I just wanted to get ahead of you and make sure I could clarify what you needed. We're on to deferred matters, there are none. Inquiries, I have two counselors who have inquiries. I'm going to start with Counsel Trosaw, who I believe circulated his to members of council.
Thank you very much, your worship. And through, through the chair, I'm going to be very careful not to make any comments or anything that can be construed as arguments, because I understand the inquiry section of our, of our rules is very, is very limited in terms of counselors may ask questions. So I'm going to frame my questions in terms of questions.
And Counsel, it's, I'm just going to pause your time. It's not intended to be a long back-and-forth question and answer, so my preference would be, ask all your questions, staff will give a response, then that is, that's how the inquiries are supposed to work. It's not meant to be a series of back-and-forth questions.
I understand that, and that's what I, that's what I plan, that's what I plan to do. So this has been made available to staff, and we have had some discussions about this. Okay, quote, "What is the current status of warming centers in the City of London? Given the current conditions, is the provision of such services adequate in terms of the number and capacity of the facilities provided, the hours of operation, and the threshold conditions for making such services available? Are additional warming center facilities being planned? And I should add, and if so, how could they possibly be funded?" That is my inquiry.
Well, I'm not sure if all that will be able to be answered today, but I'll turn it over to the city manager to, to get started on that.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to the members of council. I certainly appreciate the question and want to start by saying that we do have at least five identified warming centers in each of our community centers, East Lines, North London Optimus, Canada Games Aquatic Center, South London Community Center, and Carling Heights. Those are posted on our city website. Those are available and accessible for anyone who wants to go there between, in the, during the hours that they are open. So they are arenas, community centers, they're open periods of time in the morning through to late in the evening. Also, there are also warming centers across our community that look like malls, that look like libraries, like, look like other areas as well. I think at this point in time, city staff have been working closely with our funded service providers in this community to provide as much support as we can to those who might be impacted by extreme weather. We're having an extreme cold weather situation right now. Last night, we were able to create additional 44 spaces in this community for people who might be impacted by the weather. While I can't really respond to whether that's sufficient or enough, I do know that there is information in this community that suggests that we should be providing more services. We'll continue to work with those organizations to determine what supports they would like us to provide within the existing system of service they have currently.
All right, Counsel Trosaw. Is that, okay, that's it.
Pursuant to the rules, in that section, I'd like to indicate that with leave of council, I would be permitted to bring an emergent motion with a, with a two-thirds vote, which is not debatable, and I would just like to have the clerk verify that that's the case.
I will verify the rules, Counsel, and we'll just have you hold on for... Okay, so just colleagues said, a refresher of how this works is if you ask an inquiry, you get an answer. There is a section of the procedure bylaw which a member is allowed to make a motion as a result of an inquiry, but they have to seek leave in accordance with the leave section of the procedure bylaw. Leave is not debatable. We basically decide on it right away, and leave requires two-thirds of the members present to support to allow for leave to make a motion. So... Okay, so Counsel Trosaw is moving leave to allow himself to make a motion. I need a seconder for the leave. Point of order? Sure, yeah, you can always do a point of order. Turn off your microphone, Counsel.
Sorry, thank you, your worship. I did not bring my council procedural bylaw with me. At which point procedurally is it acceptable? As I did not see anything circulated beforehand of what this motion may or may not relate to. I would assume it has to relate to the information he just got, but having not seen the motion, when is it procedurally acceptable to know what we'd be hearing if we want to take leave or not? or not?
That's after we grant leave. So, because if we're not going to grant leave, we're not going to hear motions here, or the motions will be done at committee. So we don't get into entertaining motions. Okay, Counsel Hopkins is willing to second the leave motion. There's a mover and a seconder for the leave motion. It requires two-thirds of members present. There's no debate. We just vote on this right away. This is giving Counsel Trosaw permission to introduce a motion based on his inquiry. Point of order. Go ahead, Counsel Trosaw.
Would it be appropriate procedurally for the counselors to hear the gist of my motion?
Just give me a second on that. No, leave is not debatable. Leave is the motion on the floor, so, no, you can't do that at this time, unfortunately. So, we're on the motion for leave. It's moved and seconded, non-debatable. So we're doing leave now. Okay, so that's not debatable, so we're going to open the vote on providing Counsel Trosaw leave to introduce...
Closing the vote, and the motion fails, 7 to 7. On a tie.
Actually, it was required two-thirds, so it was not close. It was, it requires more than that. Okay. Okay, so you don't have leave to introduce the motion. I'm going to move on to Counsel Van Meerebruggen's inquiry then.
Thank you, Mayor. As we all know, the very economic vibrancy of all of Canada, but certainly southwestern Ontario, is at stake right now. We're facing tectonic shifts in our trading patterns, in how our local economy thrives, the trading relationship with the United States.
Counselor, just so you know how inquiries work, is you get to the question fairly quick, and you don't provide a lot of debate opinion. You kind of just stick to what the inquiry is. So if you get to what the inquiry is...
Correct. Yeah, I'm just giving some context. This trading relationship was developed over decades, and it's the envy of the world. And as we know, it's under threat. The national government has come forward, the Ontario government. My question to you, Mayor, and/or staff, is what is London, Ontario, and the London region doing to have our voices heard by our neighbors to the south, and indeed to our other levels of government, about how important these sectors, such as manufacturing, are to our area? If you could just enlighten us with that? Thank you.
Yes, okay, so that is a question. Thank you. Sorry for pushing you along, but the rules are fairly specific and tight in this section, so a big preamble is not really contemplated in the leave question. I'm going to start with the answer. I'll have our staff add anything else with just some factual information. So, yes, municipalities, including the City of London, have offered support to a Team Canada approach to the current tariffs being contemplated by the Trump administration. I currently serve as Chair of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Big City Mayors' Caucus, and not only have I engaged in discussions with my mayoral colleagues and the FCM, I've had a personal conversation with Premier Ford directly on this topic, offering support of Canada's major cities to the work that the premiers are doing through the Council of Federation. The Council of Federation met, which includes the Prime Minister and the premiers. They met last week, and they are determining a strategy and approach to this. My communication to Premier Ford was that cities are not looking to step on the toes of a strategy but be a part of a Team Canada approach, and certainly I myself would be involved in that approach as Chair of the Big City Mayors' Caucus. The FCM President is likely to be involved as well. The Big City Mayors have a meeting in person in Ottawa on February 6th, and the Premier of Ontario, as well as any other premiers who would like to come. In addition to, representatives from the federal cabinet have been invited to present at that meeting of mayors, and I have added this topic to the agenda that we have that day. And so, to go back to London's involvement, London's involvement at this point is through my involvement in the BCMC. And I would say it's not one city or another. It's, all the cities are united in having a common Canadian strategy to addressing this because although we will certainly feel it in some way here, it will be felt in other cities in many different ways. And so, that is what we are doing. The engagements have also included engagements with local Chamber of Commerce, local businesses that I've spoken to who have significant supply chain connections, certainly not all of them, but some of the key ones who I've had the chance to reach out to. And all of that is being fed up. One piece I'll add to is the mayors, through our organizations like FCM, are actively reaching out to the equivalent mayoral associations and municipal associations within the U.S., like the National League of Cities, and other ones to create city-to-city connections so that we can be effective from a municipal sector across the border. And I can tell you from the engagements I've had, cities in the U.S. are equally concerned about counter-tariffs and any sort of trade war because it will be felt on the ground within cities. So, that's the information that I have to share at this time with respect to the inquiry, and I don't know if the city manager has anything further.
Thank you, Your Worship. I think the overview of what you provided is excellent. I think in addition to that, those of us who sit as city managers and chief administrative officers across the province will be following up and supporting the work of mayors and heads of council. We also have many opportunities for many discussions with provincial stakeholders, federal counterparts, and also amongst ourselves. So I think in light of what we now know as some of the changes that are coming, we'll be having some discussions about that. I'd also like to highlight the fact that we are in the midst of starting our own economic development strategy, and I think as challenging as this is, it might be timely in terms of us also looking at what it means for our community as we develop that strategy and how we build what we see as potential concerns into that strategy and how we move that forward in partnership with others as well.
All right, so that concludes that inquiry. I will, yep, you're welcome. Onto emergent motions. There are none. We're on to bylaws. Just give me one sec, I'll tell you how we're going to divide the bylaw. Okay, so we're going to do bylaws in four sections. The first, we're going to do the bylaw that I brought directly before council. This continues to be the bylaws that council has asked me and given me their support for bringing directly to council to speed up the process for items related to partnerships and RFPs related to affordable housing. So that'll be Bill 44. We'll do that first. That'll be a hand vote. We do a hand vote for bills that I bring directly to council. The second one we'll deal with is Bill 52, which is the bill that Counsel Rahman declared a pecuniary interest on. Then we will deal with Bills 61, 64, 65, and added Bill 72, which are all the bills related to the BRT system. And then we will do all remaining bylaws after that. Okay? So that's the plan. All right, so the first one will be the bylaw that I've brought before committee, so I'm looking for a mover and a seconder for that. Counsel Rahman seconded by Counsel Cuddy. And this is by hand, and so this is first reading of that bylaw. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Motion carries.
All right, mover and seconder for second reading of this bylaw. Moved by Counsel Hillier, seconded by Counsel Pelosi. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, by hand, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, mover and seconder for third reading. Counsel Cuddy, Counsel Rahman. We'll open third, we're not going to open it, we're going to do by hand. All those in favor, by hand? And any opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, yes, sorry, and I broke my rule of keeping the same mover and seconder on that. We'll go back to that on this one. The next is Bill 52, the one that Counsel Rahman declared a pecuniary interest on. This is related to Transportation Services Licensing Agreement, Transit Commission and Fanshawe College. The mover and seconder for this, Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel Hillier, and we'll use you for all three of these. We'll open first reading for voting.
Trosaw votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0 with one recuse.
All right, second reading, same mover and seconder. Any discussion at second reading? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Trosaw votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0 with one...
Okay, and same mover and seconder for third reading, and we'll open that for voting as soon as it's ready.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0 with one recuse.
All right, the next set of bills we'll deal with is Bills 61, 64, 65, and added Bill 72, which is out of our in-camera session. These are all bills related to the BRT system. I'll look for a mover and a seconder for that set of bills. Moved by Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel Trosaw, and we'll use you for all three of these. I will open first reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 1.
Second reading, same mover and seconder, Cuddy and Trosaw. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 1.
Third reading, same mover and seconder, and we'll open that for voting as soon as it's ready.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 1.
Okay, next, we're going to do everything that's left, which is Bill number 43 to 71, excluding 44, 52, 61, 64, 65. I'll look for a mover and a seconder for that grouping. Moved by, how about Counsel Hopkins and Counsel Lehman this time. We'll use you for all three. We'll open first reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Okay, same mover and a seconder for second reading. Any discussion on any of these bills? Okay, seeing none, we'll open this for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Okay, third and final reading for these sets of bills, same mover and seconder. We will open third reading for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
All right, that concludes the bylaw section, which means we only have adjournment left. I'll look for someone to move a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counsel Van Meerebruggen, seconded by Counsel Cuddy. By hand, all of those in favor of adjournment?
That motion carries.
All right, thank you. We are adjourned. Appreciate your time today.